I'd like to call to order the City of Bothell Planning Commission. Tonight is Wednesday, October 24, 2018 at 6:00 PM. All the commissioners are here with the exception of Commissioners Cecil and Karenin, who are absent and excused. This is a time we will move on to non-agenda public comments. And to be clear from the public, this is a time to speak on any items that aren't on tonight's agenda. So if you're here with regards to something on tonight's agenda, if you could hold those public comments, you'll have time when we move into the public hearing a little bit later on. So are there any non-agenda public comments? Okay, seeing none. We have no minutes tonight, no new business. So with that, we will go ahead and move into the public hearing. The public hearing tonight is Downtown Plan and Code Amendments, and will be led by Senior Planner David Boyd. We also have Mike Stanger and Arthur Sullivan from Arch, a regional coalition for housing, to assist us generally with affordable housing components. Oh, and also Michael Kaderman with Community Economic Development. So with that, I'll hand it over to Dave Boyd.
Thank you, and good evening. I apologize for the lack of agendas. Hope everybody got them or can share agendas for tonight's meeting. This is the third meeting Planning Commission has had on the 2018 Downtown Plan and Code Amendments. We held two study sessions. This is the first public hearing. In anticipation of this public hearing, we did do a courtesy notice mailing to all properties within the affected areas of the rezone and the downtown transition code amendment, as well as properties within 500 feet of those areas. We also put out notice boards with flyers with tonight's agenda packet in those. So I'd like to thank all the folks that have come out tonight, those who have sent comments. And I've gotten, in addition to the comments that I forwarded on to commission today, or was it yesterday, I've got two written comments here tonight. So I'll circulate those and introduce them as exhibits when those people speak, assuming that they're going to speak. Otherwise, I'll enter them when we get to that point of the agenda. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and go through a short presentation. Some of this is going to be repeat, but I wanted to get this on the public record here at the hearing. And there are some refinements to some images, slides that may look familiar to you. So we'll see if this remote works. I may have to go up to the podium. So we are looking at four different amendments within the downtown plan. Rezone of the general commercial zone to SR 522 corridor. That is, in the upper-left image, the bright green area would have the same zoning across SR 522 corridor. Those are abbreviated as GC and 522. Second amendment would, code amendment, would remove the remaining downtown transition density limits, and those are shown in the three orange crosshatched areas in the image to the lower right. A third code amendment would change the design review process for projects within the downtown special review area, which is shown outlined in red here between Bothell Way and 104th, and from 522 up to 185th. And then a fifth, a fourth code amendment that we've been going through the study session process on are changes to the public open space requirements. In addition to these, the revised code amendments that were posted and sent to commission on October 19th, we will be presenting some additional revisions this evening that we didn't, weren't ready to get to you ahead of tonight's hearing, but we do have copies of those for you. Mostly more for, changes of form rather than substance, but there are a few changes. And because of that, we are recommending that we will need to continue this public hearing, be able to put those out to the public, and give the public a chance to testify on those at a continued public hearing. We're recommending November 14th. I'll get into that more later. So the code amendments before us tonight, the plan amendment is a rezone of the general commercial zone to SR 522 corridor. It's shown here, again, in the bright green in the colored map and in the aerial photograph. It's the GC area that extends from Ormbreck Street down to Wayne Curve. This oblique aerial is a view, kind of showing the character of that area, a fair amount of apartment development. Well, this is mostly the area right along the highway, so actually auto-oriented commercial development all along that corridor, with apartment development in the DT Downtown Transition District uphill from that. As we've discussed, late in the downtown plan adoption process, there was comment from a resident in West Hill up above this area with concerns about the potential for four-story development and view blockage, and also apartment dwellers being able to look into the backyards. We didn't have time, a chance to do any analysis of that, and so when we heard last year, as we were preparing the docket, that some property owners in that area were interested in going to the originally proposed SR 522 corridor zoning that would allow residential development as well, we thought this was a good time to bring it forward, and it was initiated by council as part of the 2018 planning docket. You can see in the image to the upper left, the potential redevelopment with three stories over parking, which would be the new height limit, a total of four stories, would not be tall enough to either block views from the single-family residents above, or for those, the residents, and if this was a residential development, to look into the backyards of those adjacent single-family homes. A little bit more information on this rezone, in the lower-left, another view of that massing study, showing that we're looking at the site where Carriage Auto Rebuild is now. We just use that because it's the developed site that's most directly in the line of the houses above. One issue that came up, and that's been mentioned in the packets, is that there are some special downtown setback and upper-level height limits that apply to areas in the downtown zone that have height limits above 35 feet and are adjacent to single-family zoning. So this is one area where that would apply. So the special setback would be 25 feet. In our estimation, it's unlikely that development along this corridor would even extend as close as 25 feet because of the topography, but that's the closest they could come to any adjacent properties. And since this is a four-story zone, from that setback line, there would be a 65-foot setback for any development above three stories. So both of those would apply here, and it would basically be along this entire yellow line here, from the downtown transition zoning at the north, all the way down to 522. At the last study session, there was a request to have a, do a section through an analysis through the area to the north, essentially through Brooks Biddle Automotive here, just south of 180th. And so this is that analysis. In the middle of this area are three existing three-story apartment buildings, or two stories over parking level. Just outside of the downtown subarea, single-family zoning, R8400, property lines are shown, the vertical lines here. And the existing Brooks Biddle, single-story auto-commercial use is shown there. With, under the current zoning, the GC zoning, you would be able to go up to 35 feet from, and there would be just a five-foot buffer on both the front and back setbacks, or from the front and back property lines. With the proposed SR 522 zoning, the building envelope would go up to four stories and 45 feet, but it would be a 10-foot setback from, on the back, and actually a 15-foot setback on the front. So that just shows the impact. So the development, given the topography, would still be lower in height than the adjacent apartment buildings to the west up the hill. This is a comprehensive plan amendment because it would involve changing some, this section of the community vision, which is part of the downtown comprehensive plan. And basically, it's a simple amendment. It just removes the references to the general commercial zone that would remain within this SR 522 corridor area. Along with that, we would change the map here and all of the other key maps in this section, which show the zoning in the subject zoning in color and the other areas in gray. So we would just need to make sure that those all have the same gray on both sides of 522. And at the very beginning of this section, and this is in your packet as well, in the memo, we would change this downtown structure map to reflect that code change and eliminate the general commercial zone from the legend. The issue of uses did come up, and the SR 522 corridor, like the general commercial zone, allows auto-oriented uses, but unlike the general commercial use zone, it also allows residential uses. And then at the last Planning Commission meeting, when we were talking about specific uses, there was some discussion about whether self-storage warehouses should be allowed. They are not included in the current downtown tables, and in fact, they would be in a category that isn't even included, warehousing, distribution, storage. The Planning Commission was unanimous, I think, in their feeling that as one of the major approaches to our downtown, it wasn't appropriate to see that fill up with self-storage warehouses. So we made that explicit in this note box in the yellow in this table. Moving on to the downtown transition code amendment, this would remove the remaining 20 unit per acre density limit. Some areas, those density limits were removed from some areas in 2014, and here, there would be special height limits and setbacks, as in the GC adjacent to single-family zones, and that would apply to the West Hill frontage. So we're looking at three areas here, what I'm calling the West Hill frontage, along the west side of the downtown subarea, what I'm calling the West Maywood frontage, along Bothell Way, south of 190th, and along the south side of 186th, between 101st and 103rd, what I'm calling the South Maywood frontage. So here again are those areas, and aerial photo map with the zoning, well, starting with the West Hill frontage, in an oblique aerial to show the development character of that area. And in the upper-right, a map showing some of the existing densities there. So this is an area that actually has a number of sites with more than 20 units per acre. And as we heard at the last study session, there was a comment saying that the density limit makes some of those properties non-conforming, and has been an issue in terms of getting loans for rehabilitating those projects. So that's one reason for doing it, and also with both of these, both the rezone and this removal of the density limits, that creates a nexus for an affordable housing requirement. And that was the focus of the September 26th study session, and we'll get into that a little bit more here shortly. In the, what I'm calling the West Maywood frontage, there are no, there's no current multifamily, but there is a proposal for a 20, a development of townhomes at the 20 dwelling unit per acre limit on a vacant parcel at the very south end of this area. And in the South Maywood frontage, again, we don't have any current development proposal. There are two current duplexes, and I believe there's one triplex also here that I haven't called out, but for the most part, these are small lot, single-family developments, and a couple of commercial office developments on the west end of the block. So now, getting into zoning for affordable housing, we presented last, actually, Mike Stanger from Arch presented on September 28th, sixth, their analysis, looking at the development capacity with both of these, this rezone and these code amendments, and there, that looks at land value per dwelling unit, and determines what the overall increased capacity is, and what the benefit to the property owner is with redevelopment, and then establishes a rate, a percentage of affordable units, and a level of affordability that results in a formula that, where the property owner gets some benefit, but the public also gets the benefit of the affordable units. And I will let them, they're available to fill in on that at the end of my presentation, and to answer any questions on that as we go forward in your deliberations. Here are some of the assumptions, 4.5 capitalization rate, or cap rate, that basically is a measure of the return on investment for a property owner, the average market rate based on current conditions here, and land costs that vary somewhat, that are higher in the downtown transition zone than in the general commercial, or 522 rezone area. We looked at the increased capacity, and they've made some, taken a closer look at that after the discussion on September 28th, and then will, are prepared to talk about that as we move forward. That all resulted in this, these tables. This is the table for the general commercial to 522 rezone area, where that resulted in a recommendation, we're now recommending 5%, that 5% of the units in this area be affordable at a moderate rate, which we're defining as 60% of the area median income for rental, and 80% for ownership housing. As part of this, this one is a little more complicated, because first of all, there's no existing residential allowed, and we are adding an extra floor of height in the capacity side of it, but we could still have some straight commercial development here. You would be allowed to do a four-story office building here, for example. So this was a kind of a late suggestion, but, and we wanted to bring it to Planning Commission, that we could explore a requirement for commercial development that takes advantage of that height increase to contribute monetarily to an affordable housing fund, or build affordable housing off-site, if the Commission feels like that would be worth looking into. And of course, that would also require a continued hearing. For the downtown transition areas, the analysis, the initial analysis pointed to a requirement of either 8 or 10% of the units to be affordable at that moderate rate. Again, the additional analysis, we think, does support the higher level, that 10% requirement, which is the typical requirement that other communities have applied in the area. Moving on to the design review process for the downtown special review area, again, shown here in the red outline, this is a, we do want to go forward with a very simple amendment here that basically changes the requirement for these such projects to go to the Landmark Preservation Board. Currently, the code says that they have to go to the board before any building permits are approved. We are proposing changing that before, or they're, currently, they go before they're issued, and we want to change that to be before they're approved. There are other issues that are proposed, that we're proposing to be deferred related to this one. Our historic preservation staff is, has got a grant to do some research into potential historic districts, including possibly in this area, and that could, we think that further look at the historic resources regulations would benefit from being done in conjunction with that, and that's still coming in the near future, but is not, wasn't ready to wrap into this. The other one, we want to look at the main street pedestrian oriented retail requirement, and maybe tighten that up to make sure that we're getting the kind of retail development that we want to see there, and do that, again, along with that review of the historic resources And for the proposed plan, public open space regulation amendments, at the September 28th session, I said that we didn't feel like we had had time to do a thorough review of this, and we still haven't, but we did, there was some concern on part of the Planning Commission that they did want to see some progress made on this front, and we are proposing a code amendment that's more legible in your packet than it is on the screen here, that would clarify the relationship between fee and lieu, and our parks and open space impact fees that are collected citywide and can be used citywide. So that's the first step. We would anticipate some additional amendments related to that in 2019. So at that point, I'll open it up for questions and comments. If either Arthur or Mike wanted to also to weigh in on anything further on their analysis of the affordability requirement, this would be a good time. I did want to introduce the second revision to the code amendments that is on your dais, and two new exhibits that I have already distributed. Exhibit number three is a letter from Ann Agard, and exhibit number four, a letter from Klev Schonig, who also spoke at the September study session. I have since received two others. Just tonight, and so I'm going to enter those now and pass them on from, so exhibit five would be a letter from James Caniff, and exhibit six would be a letter from Lisa Vorwork. So with that, if there are any clarifying questions, we'll handle those first, and then we can go to public testimony.
Okay, thanks, Dave. As you hand this out, I guess we'll let the Commission go ahead and weigh in if you have just questions with regards to the presentation. And thanks for, Archer, being here, and Michael, and Dave. And just before I forget, because I might, because it's a busy meeting tonight, we really appreciate everybody coming out tonight. It means a lot. We rarely have maybe one or two people in the audience, so this is, this is really great to have everybody down here. We know a lot of people eat around this time of night, and this is a big, taking a lot of time out of your schedule, and we really very much appreciate it. Thank you very much. Yeah, we're going to kind of glance at these really quick, Dave, for a second, these comments that you handed us. We're just going to take a quick glance at these comments that you just handed out, these letters.
You can, or you can wait and...
Or we'll look at them a little later?
Continue, yeah.
Okay. I guess, Arthur, I'll start with a question for you, either you or Mike, with regards to the affordable housing numbers. To be clear, from what I just heard in the presentation, the downtown transition, was it, was it the recommendation of 10% of affordable units for the downtown? Is that right? Okay.
Yes.
Can you explain a little bit the percentages of the affordable housing overlay for the SR 522? It is quite a bit lower, and it just has to do, I guess, with many different reasons.
It's for a couple of reasons. When we look at, and I don't know if you could put that chart back up, Dave, that might help, as I'm making my comments for the audience and commissioners, that we're trying to create some level of balance between what the city's actions are through their zoning procedures, and what would be the offset to the builder in terms of how much affordability is being asked for. So we're always trying to be sensitive to that. Key variables in trying to measure that balance in terms of value to the builder, what the city is offering, is how much are you increasing the development capacity? Because we're using a method here where we're not saying how many per extra unit, you're changing your zoning from one level to another, but we're still expressing the affordability from the overall project point of view. So one is, how much are you increasing the development capacity? And then in different types of residential uses, you can see land values may be different. So you look at those two things combined to sort of get a sense of what is it in terms of potential value to developer? The offset to that is what is the reduce for the affordable units? What is the reduced rent or sales prices? And so when we balance those two together, basically, for the general commercial area, it's only a one-story increase where there's already three, so it's a, you know, so it's a smaller proportion of existing development capacity that you're adding. So from a very simplistic point of view, that translates to not asking for as higher percentage of the overall building, because you're offering less of that total new building envelope as new space. Whereas in the transition zone, if it goes from 20 to 30, it's still not that, you know, relative to some other areas of downtown, but relative to where it's starting from, it's a relatively high percentage increase. So that's the... So that's the primary reason. It's also a little bit looking at the differences in land values at lower densities versus at the higher densities. So that's on a simple, I can go into more if you have more specific, but that's sort of the gist of it. And we were originally at eight to 10. We weren't quite sure for the transition zone. I think we got more comfortable with the 10, because this analysis showed that for that, the trade-off was just about equal, but we were a little conservative in terms of what the increased density might be, because there's no set maximum density, we're sort of guessing at that. We realized, looking at some of the other examples, some buildings have gone in, it density is greater than, even the chart you see, you've seen densities higher than 26, 27 units to acre, which is what we were assuming. So that means you're potentially giving them more capacity increase. And so we felt that because of that, and also, as Mike pointed out, as we were doing the work on this, I don't know if you pointed out to this group here, at this point in time, this is your opportunity to set an affordability requirement. If you ever felt in the future you were off some, you can always round, you can always go down, lower. You can say, oh, okay, maybe the affordability shouldn't be at 60% of median, maybe it's 70% of median for rental unit. You know, you can change it where the burden is less, but after you do the zoning, you can't change it for the burden to be greater. And so if you find out later, which some cities have, that that requirement is sort of feels like very generous, or generous to the builder, you can't go back and say we'd like to get more affordability. So we feel, still feel this is a fair ratio, and, but if for some reason there is enough changes in economics, you have the ability to adjust it later. That's why we're comfortable with the 10% from that range that we have.
Okay. And so, into, okay, I guess I could ask more about this later, but essentially, like, we're talking about Bothell right now, if you were to, this could vary, this could vary depending on the area for any other town, the regions for people watching. So, but, that's the one thing that we can't ever increase, that we can't. Yeah, that is an interesting comment.
Without further change to your zoning and development capacity, it's at the time you change development capacity where you can ask for that trade-off of some public benefit.
Okay. Thanks.
Can you go back to the previous slide, Dave? I like, we hadn't talked about this last time, but the yellow highlighted section about a commercial, commercial project maybe contributing to the Affordable Housing Fund. Would we be one of the first to do that, or is that done in other jurisdictions?
So, off the top of my head, when this question was posed, I can think of three other areas, at least three communities in King County, who have provisions somewhat related to this. First is Seattle, which in, actually, in their central core area, builders can get more height in exchange for making a contribution, paying a fee for affordable housing. Bellevue and the Bell Red Corridor has a provision that they have a base density, and if you go above that base density, that for residential, there's several different public benefits you can provide, including affordable housing, and that can be money, or it can be, or it can be provision of affordable housing or open space. For the commercial development, they don't have a linkage to affordable housing, but they do have a linkage to public benefit, being primarily affordable, being public open spaces, which can be either provided or a cash payment made. The third example is in the city of Issaquah, in the central Issaquah area, where they also have a bonus program, and in that bonus program, they have provisions that builders, for both commercial and housing, must provide a public benefit, and that public benefit goes to open space or affordable housing, and that applies to both commercial and residential. So those are other examples of communities. There may be others, those are the ones I could think of off the top of my head, so you'd be, it isn't real common, but it is, also has some precedent.
Okay. And can you expand a little bit on the Affordable Housing Fund? The other jurisdictions that are part of Arch, and how that potentially could come back to Bothell as part of a affordable housing project?
So that's, and this is an area where most cities haven't had historically in lieu fees created through these types of programs. In the last four or five years, that is getting a little more common. Most cities have language similar to yours, which says, we'd like for it to get spent in the study area, but legally, you could potentially spend it elsewhere. That leaves the door open to a couple of different approaches to funding, depending on how you put that language in there. I mean, that would be another component. One is, you would reserve it and say, we want it spent only in a certain area, and that could still be administered through the central trust fund process, but that would be a string attached to that, saying it would have to be a project only if it's in a certain area. Some of the cities have kept that door open, and have just put it into the more general regional fund that the cities contribute to, and they've let their money go wherever affordable housing is being created. Many of the cities, though, have language similar to yours, saying, let's at least try to, and we, Kirkland's generated the most revenue so far, and we have managed to have the revenue land in projects in their cities. So that's one where it would be a community discussion on how firm they want to say that money must be spent in a certain area versus if there's any flexibility, and that's up to the city call, and you can go either way, or some combination.
Okay. Thanks.
Are there any of the commissioners who have general comments? And Dave, just to touch on the, on the storage, on the 522 corridor, one of the storage facilities, I know they've had a land use proposal sign up for some time for an extension on to their current facility. I saw in our packet, I don't, I don't, basically, it was, I don't know if the Commission really delved into that particular aspect, the expansion of the already proposed expansion. Is, where that is along in the process, are we able as a commission to, let's say we don't, and I, I have a feeling, it sounds like in past meetings, we've not been interested in having further storage unit capacity on such a, such a nice area for residences, potential multi, multi-unit residences. Could we, can we retract that at all, or can we say no, that, or can we give a recommendation that that can't go for? And maybe it's a question for Michael, or Dave?
Actually, that, that project is vested to the rules that existed when they applied for their permit. So as long as they keep that, that permit active, it hasn't been issued yet, there's still some issues being worked out, but that will, as long as it does move forward, they will be able to, to do their expansion. And it is actually towards the, the south side, so it's away from the rest of the district for that, you know, to the degree, degree that matters. But this code amendment would apply to any future applications.
Okay.
So if I could just add a little bit to that, just to pick up on Dave's last point, this would make it a legal non-conforming use? So even that new expansion would be deemed a legal non-conforming use, assuming they go through the rest of the process and complete that, but it would not allow for any future expansion of that particular project, because it would be limited to whatever its approval is at that point.
Okay. Thanks, Michael.
Aaron? I have a real brief question on the Brooks Biddle picture that was up there. Does the increase include elevator towers beyond the top of the drawing?
There are limited provisions for elevator towers and architectural features, say, above a corner entry or any entry feature, but, and I, yeah, I didn't include them here. They would, they're, they're allowed to go up to 15 feet above the, the height limit, but they are generally pretty confined, like to an elevator headhouse.
Thank you.
Dave, can you go back one more slide? Maybe one more, sorry. The other cross-sectional view that we had, the initial one that we looked at the study session, I think it's slide three.
Okay.
Yeah, and you touched on this a little bit about the location of the buildings and what makes sense for development, but like the gray structure that we see added, the three over one, that's added along Bothell Way, 522?
Right.
Is that set at the, you know, with the 65-foot setback, where it's illustrated in this picture, is that set at the furthest back it can be on that property line? Or could it be another 50 feet back and pose a larger impact to the houses above?
What we analyzed here was what a likely development would be that would, that would, the grades there are quite steep, so we didn't go as far, we didn't go all the way to that 25-foot special setback line in this, in this, this proposal. This is basically what could be built on the, that, with a small amount of, where the, the parking level would be dug into the, into the grade, but the upper levels would, would be above ground. And, and to have any usable space on the backside of an upper level, it would have to be above, above grade.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, with that, I don't see any other comments, general comments yet from the commissioners. This will be the time in the meeting then, that we can open up for public comment. Oh, great. Oh, wow. I'm not used to, I've never had to do this, so this is kind of cool. So I'll go ahead and, go ahead and start from the top of the list, and so, again, this is the time for public comments for agenda topics for tonight that you've just been shown. If you could, once I say your name, or I guess we have your name, if you could state your name and your address, and if you could try to keep your comments to three minutes, that would be great. So it looks like we can start with Barry, is it Tukey?
I was just signing in. I wasn't going to comment.
Okay, great. Thanks, Barry.
I should mention, I did ask people to sign in, whether they wanted to speak, or whether they just wanted to be on our contact list.
Got it. Okay, great. So should I read down this list, or should I just, yeah, I'll just keep going. We have Amy and John Cook, if you want to speak.
John, yeah, no comment from me.
Just wanted to come down tonight, well, thank you for joining us. We have James Caniff.
Yeah.
Thanks, James. If you could say your name and, or just your, your address for the record?
How do you turn the mic on? It's on. All right. Can you? I'm James Caniff. I live at 10201 Northeast 186th Street. So I have the, this house right here is mine, the third house over. There's a triplex here right next to me, and then there's two duplexes in this area already. I'm going to read what I wrote, but basically, I'd like to vote, the Planning Commission to vote no on this area for redevelopment. I think anything over three stories and 35 feet is not appropriate, this area. I mean, I feel like maybe, you know, Yakima Fruit Stand, that's fine if you want to build apartments, or by Popkinia, it's fine, but this is, doesn't belong in this area, and that's why you have such a big turnout tonight. The traffic increase from apartments from three stories or higher, this is single-family homes, we've got kids, fast cars going in the street, parking spaces, probably not on these three higher story, loss of parking. A lot of these people don't have driveways in the front of their houses, there's like two or three houses, this house right here, the duplex, there's an elderly lady lives there, it's only street parking only. I have two young kids, two and three, we go in the front door, no street, I mean, no driveway in the front of my house. This is going to increase our taxes also. I mean, my rate just jumped from the school, that'd be $600. I mean, you rezone me, my taxes are going up. Loss of privacy, right now, I get light from the Edge Hotel, Edge Apartments, which are, you can't really see them, but they're back over here. They have a roof terrace that has bright lights that shine in every night into my house. And then Mike, who lives right here, at the end of 186, the condos right here can look into his house. I don't need that. I don't need people looking into my house. I have two small kids. I don't need peeping toms, okay? I mean, I've been through this before. We owned a house right here, I grew up in, the city took it for parking, for the city of Bothell Police Station. And then you guys took their parking, because you put City Hall here. I mean, I don't know if the cops park in this building, but this was built by Vulcan, and it's supposed to be parking for everybody in this city, and I think that if the cops want more parking, they can park in the city parking, like the rest of us residents. They don't need more parking. I mean, I drove by the lot this morning at 6:45, and the police officers, the whole lot was full. You know, if you have to go to the police station, how can you park? So I think the zoning is no good for us on this South Maywood footage. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Caniff, I really appreciate your comments. Thank you, and thank you for the letter that will be added. Lucille Antonio? If you could state your address?
My name is Lucille Antonio. I live at 10144 Northeast 186th Street. I actually live across the street from where you are planning your zoning. I live in affordable housing. All my neighbors live in affordable housing now. We have elderly people, Mrs. Mackay, who Jim pointed out, she takes care of her son, who is disabled. All, every single person on the street has a really strong ties to Bothell. I would not like to see another big building built there. The addition building has blocked my son and my view, and all the neighbors' son and view over there, so I really would like to have you consider this. And I can see that there's a lot of people here who this is going to affect their single homes, where they have lived for a long time. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. Lisa Vorwork?
Hello.
Hello. Thank you.
So I live next to James and across from Lucy, at 10139 Northeast 186th Street. I fear that this rezoning, the long-term goal is to sort of push us out, right, and build these larger structures, and while that's good for density, I feel like it's, it feels a little disrespectful to those of us who have, a lot of us, lived in Bothell our entire lives, and like Lucy said, we live in affordable housing now. Your figures of affordable rent, based on a 700 and something square foot apartment, are actually more than what I currently pay for my 800 and something square feet home in rent. My parents own the property, so I have the luxury of that reduced rate, but that's what makes it affordable. So I just, I just fear that the long-term goal here is to use eminent domain to get us out, to increase taxes, to push us out, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, all of us have been part of this community for a long enough time that we feel like, we feel like we've earned the respect, I guess, to be able to stay in our homes and be part of our community. I actually teach at the very same school that my mother attended in elementary school, so like, you know, my, my family helped build the city, and it, it just feels like we're being pushed out, and I just don't want that to happen. And because it's affordable housing for us, we literally couldn't afford anything else in the city. We wouldn't be able to stay here if it were to come to the point where we're sort of pushed out. So I apologize for being emotional about our homes, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for your comments. Tim King?
That was my wife, Lisa, and I live 10139 Northeast 186th Street, next to James and Lucy. I just basically agree, I just feel like all the bigger, taller buildings going in kind of all around us, we're just kind of feeling like everything's pushing in, it's just really changing the vibe. Maybe some people like that, but to us, it seems like we, that's not really what we like. We love the vibe of our street, we feel like it has a really nice, friendly, kind of old-school neighborhood, you know, small houses, and we just don't want it to change. We just really like it the way it is, and I feel like if a bunch more taller buildings are coming in even closer... And I feel like if a bunch more taller buildings are coming in even closer, then it'll just kind of change things for the worse for us. And we just like our street the way it is, and we just hope you guys will keep it that way. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim. Brett Carlson? Okay, thank you. Monica Hubert? Signed in, thank you for joining us. Pat Pierce?
Hi, I'm Pat Pierce, 10001, no, yeah, 10001 Northeast 190th. I really kind of want to start in saying that I agree with the affordable housing issue, but I wish it were made citywide, not just in the downtown area. So, if you go forward with the Canyon Park Center, that needs to be part of the discussion. And also going forward when the comp plan comes up for renewal, or any other comp plan issues come up, please consider it there, not just in downtown. I also read Anna Agard's email, and I recommend the, the issues that she has in there. Some of them are fairly technical, but I won't get into them. And the rest of my comments, I'm going to really focus on the Maywood, Bexstrom Hill area, because that's where I live. It's a very old plat, the, the bottom part of the plat, where the people who are speaking now were just, was about 1889. And then following that, the Woody's First Edition was layered on that, going up to what is 190th, boarded by 104th and 101st. And it's had several different zoning. There's been down zones, up zones, everywhere, sideways. And so, it is a remarkable neighborhood and rather complex, but if you live there, you love it, so. What we have here, though, is in this neighborhood, is there's a lack of kind of protections on looking at, using alleyways, which we have, or hillsides and so forth. It just, things just kind of get plopped down. And so, if you look at the neighborhood where I live, it, you have a hillside coming down, and then it goes up to the top. Down at the bottom, they have the alleyway, and that was part of not taking the density cap off in these two zones, is that you back right into the neighborhoods, basically. And so, the density caps were left on in, in that 2014, was it? I was part of that agreement with a developer, that we would use the hillsides and the alleyways to, to, to buffer the, the existing neighborhoods. Our existing neighborhoods have funny zoning on them because our lots are so small. We do not qualify for the special stacks and height limits that are listed there, that provide a transition to the lower-density existing residential areas. So, we do not have that comfort. In other words, you'll have a five-foot setback on the side, unless there are windows, and it'll go to 10. And at the back, it'll be 10-foot. There is a sewer line that runs down there that might give an extra five feet. But that 10-foot setback is less than what we've got on our lots, which is 15 at the rear. So, that's kind of a cautionary tale, and I don't know how you ameliorate that with the zoning, if that's possible, that would be a good thing to do. The, and, and the, please keep the height restrictions or lower them in any way you can, because that's part of it. You have, you know, three stories looking into a little one-story house's backyard. It can be problematic. I would like you, though, to consider something, and this has been used in the past in the city of Bothell, and that's a bonus, where you have the underlying zoning, and if the developer agrees to do something, then as a bonus, they get more density. In other words, leave the caps on, on West Hill and Bexstrom area, I call it Bexstrom Hill, sorry, but the, you know, lower and, and the west side. Leave those caps on, and if the developer will put in affordable housing, then give them bonus of a greater density. So, don't take the caps off, but have that bonus there if they agree to that.
Okay.
And it has worked in the past. That's how the, you got the sports fields in the valley.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. And I guess for, do you, do you have anything in closing?
No, but if you need to know anything about the history of this area, let me know, because I know a lot about it.
I know you know a lot about this area.
I've been involved in it for a while, so.
Yeah, thank you, Pat. Mike Robinson?
Hi. Mike Robinson, I live on the corner of 186th and 101st. I'm the Mike that's got the condos where the people look down. But I've been there for a very, very long time, long before the condos is the point. Long before all of these zoning changes that we're now looking at were in place, and it has been a real interesting interaction between our neighborhood, the first addition up there, and the city. And we have been involved in the growth and the change. When I moved in, it was the mid-'70s, and we were single-family zoning. That was perfect. It was great. And pockets had begun to collect in the neighborhood. Things weren't working, and by the early '80s, we all got together with the property owners, with the condos, with everybody, compromised the zoning to allow for growth to come, but not at the expense of the people that were already there. And it's worked beautifully. If you know the neighborhood, it's really under the knife now. There's all kinds of new condos and apartments, nice single-family houses going in, just really nice things happening. It's really a neighborhood that takes care of itself. And this transition zone is there for a reason. This is, this is the last wall between the city, which has come right up already to cross 185th with unusually big buildings for the accommodations that we've got in this city. And we're under the knife, but we're doing fine where we are, but we can't surrender anymore. And the transition zone was there long before there was any kind of intent, like we face now, to be the neighborhood the city wanted. And I'm proud to live there because of the way that people care about it. And they deserve, you know, to not have another wall put up. The transition zone, it just enhances the whole city, and the people are taking good care of it the way it is. So, basically, that's what I needed to say. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much, Mike. Sharon DeMette?
She left.
She left? Okay. I'll tell her thanks for coming down and signing, at least visiting. Tracy, is it Buckhoff? Just signed in? Okay, thanks. Kelly Moss?
Yeah, I was just signing in.
Signing in? Thank you. That is the totality of the list. I see some other hands. Oh, here we go. Let me read these, and then I'll, let's see. Is it Janet Weddell? Signing in, thank you, Jen. Lynn Anderson?
I was just signing in, but I have a couple questions, so.
Okay, great.
Hi, my name's Lynn Anderson. I live at 16600 98th Court, Northeast. And I'm actually not, I'm out of this area, but I really do support the homeowners here. I know that if my home was there, I would feel very stressed, and so I have a lot of empathy for them. I got your postcard. My question is, you only showed one building in the presentation. How many different apartment buildings could we be seeing if we rezone this whole area? I'd like to know the most, how many we could see in the future, because I only saw one in the presentation. And then, we already need to be looking at the traffic impact if we change these, how much more traffic. And I didn't see anything about any thought to how that will impact us. So, if at some point you guys could answer that, I don't know if you can now, but.
Is your question related to the 522 corridor?
Yes, that whole, this whole corridor, if you're going to rezone it, how many apartments and condos might I see? You only showed one. And, and actually, in all of these areas, I'm just trying to figure out, how many more are we looking at? So.
Thank you, Lynn.
Did you want me to take a shot at that? So, it's, we haven't done a full analysis. The best we could really do at this point, since the number of dwelling units varies depending on how the properties develop, if they, if somebody buys up a chunk of them and develops them altogether, or if they develop individually as infill, probably the best we could do is take a, kind of the average of, of new development that we're seeing in the portions of the downtown transition district that have redeveloped since the density limit was lifted, and apply that to the overall acreage. That would kind of give, give, give you a gross figure, but I don't have that, that figure right now. I do, I did want to also make one comment. The, the removal of the density limit in the downtown transition district is not increasing the height limit. So, it would remain at three stories and 35 feet, the same height as in the single-family zonings, in the, in the R4000 zoning across the street, and, and commensurate with most single-family zoning. I realize that most of the existing development isn't taking full advantage of that height, but, but we're not going, we're not going to see anything of the scale of the addition apartments in this area with, with lifting of the density limit.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. Yeah, if that is something, Dave, that we could get.
Oh, so, and as far as the 522 corridor as well, we, we don't have any, any examples to go by to get at what the, the overall number of units might be, but, so we'd have to make some, some estimates on, on what.
I know it's tough, because you're basically changing the zoning of it. There hasn't been anything in the past. What will it be?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be something interesting to see.
We have had proposals for townhouse, townhouse development across 522, so we could probably go with that as an example and, and apply that to the, to the rest of the area, making some, some allowances for the, the steep slopes and what's likely to happen there.
Okay. Thanks, Dave. And thanks for that very good question. We have John Biddle. Great.
Come gather round me wherever you roam. You must admit that the waters have grown. If you don't start swimming, you'll sink like a stone. The times they are a-changing. Mike, who sang that? Bob Dylan. Okay, to use the metaphor, the times they are a-changing. I love Bothell like everybody. I've been here for 45 years. I want to thank all your efforts on behalf of everybody to balance. It's very difficult. And there has to be give and take. I was at the meeting when Debbie Trean was the mayor, and we wanted to move to Canyon Park, and it was a lot of the same conversation. But I, I would just respectfully say, we, our business would be in favor of, of the SR 522 corridor. And the greater the potential for development brings greater development and a greater tax revenue for the city. And there's a very limited area to be able to utilize that potential, and certainly I would be in favor as a landlord. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Biddle. And thank you for that gold rendition. That was, that was definitely a first. That was, that was glorious. I don't know if there are any other singers out there, but let's see. Is there anybody else who wants to speak? Okay. This person here right in front? Yes, you, yeah, great.
Hi, my name's Ruth Thomas, and I live at 19010 101st Place, right off 190th Street. We bought our house in 2006 at the height of the market the last time around. I definitely support affordable housing, kind of getting just out of that low-income 20-ish age bracket, and now we're kind of on the other side of that. I grew up in low-income housing in Canada, actually, so I definitely appreciate that and see a need for it. However, living in the downtown area, we've really enjoyed, my husband and I have a four-year-old son, and we've, we bought in downtown so that we could walk everywhere and bike to the Burt Gilman Trail and all of those things. And we have really enjoyed a lot of the changes to the downtown area. The amenities that are there now are really great. Some things that we haven't liked are the increased density downtown, particularly the increased traffic. I like to road bike, and I used to be able to ride from my house down to the Burt Gilman Trail, and I don't feel as safe doing that. Actually quit doing it when they built the large apartment complex on the corner. And I used to tow my two-year-old in my bike trailer, and I feel like I can no longer do that safely downtown anymore. So, seeing increased density, I think I can support it down the 522 corridor, but this downtown block right here, I just feel like it'll increase traffic even more than it is already with small kids in the downtown area, trying to teach a four-year-old how to ride his bike and his scooter. He says he's an urban kid, and he's really good with the traffic, but it's, can be challenging. We live right at the traffic circle on 190th, so there's no sidewalk on our side. So, to cross the street there is really dangerous. The visibility is poor, and we've had people even yell at us that it's not a crosswalk, that there is nowhere else for us to cross there. So, I'd really hate to see more apartments too much closer to us. What I would say is, I know that change is going to happen, and I also lived in downtown Vancouver, BC, and it's commercial below, residential above, which is a plan we really liked and didn't see in downtown Seattle 15, 20 years ago when we moved here. So, one other comment I have is just the design process for these buildings, if they get approved. Just as far as taste-wise, I like the look of like the 104th apartment complex, but not the newer one that's just huge down there. So, I just feel like there needs to be some sensitivity to the character of the neighborhood downtown. And also traffic flow. One benefit from that large apartment building that was built was that you guys closed off parking on the opposite side of the street. So, in some ways, as far as biking goes, I can turn left or turn right there because there's no cars, there's no parked cars on that side. But traffic here by Lake Shore Clinic, I feel like I could get in a head-on collision every morning going to get my latte at Ladro because there's, it's so narrow. So, I really feel like traffic patterns need to change if the density continues to increase. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I saw a couple other hands, oh, in the back there, please.
My name is, oh, sorry. My name is Michelle Herzig, and my address is 9409 Northeast 174th Place. And I would echo everything here that's been said about the transition district. What I would have to just speak on separately from what they've already said with the transition district is going up West Hill, south of, I guess that would be 1, well, south of the high school is, and from south of Brooks Biddle down. When you're talking about the transition district, it goes up the hill quite steeply. And so, when you're talking about density, I'd like you to really look at the roads there and consider what that means with the increased density for the people in the neighborhood, and especially roads like Hall Road, which is a non-conforming road and is very dangerous. and especially roads like Hall Road, which is a non-conforming road and is very dangerous already. You add a lot more population, and you're talking about adding, say, in the overflow lot for Brooks Biddle, if that becomes now apartment buildings. You're creating a very dangerous situation, like making it even worse. There was just now a Toll Brothers 32 house development off the end of where our roads are as well. This has already hugely increased the capacity on Hall Road. My husband walks on that road every day to go to the bus and come back, and he's had several times where he's almost gotten hit by a car because the road is so narrow that it's a non-conforming road. Please consider that, and please that if you are going to do this, something needs to be done about that road, and it needs to become a conforming road all the way through because it's just getting more and more dangerous, and for cars, too. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. I think I saw another hand or two. Yes, sir? There you go.
Hello, I'm John Cook. I live on 18915 101st Avenue, Northeast. So, which is adjacent to the West Maywood frontage area that's proposed here for the changes. So we moved from Issaquah specifically to Bothell in the year 2000 because it had a small-town feel, and we could have a small house with some space and a, and a nice yard and things like that. So we saw tremendous development going on in Issaquah, where those types of properties were getting built right next to, and, and it just changed the entire feel of the town. And so that's, that's exactly why we moved here. Now, it, it appears that that is possibly going to take place literally in our backyard with, it looks like either a three or four-story building, looking into our backyard within five feet away, which is, is somewhat ridiculous to have a giant four, four-story wall five feet away in your backyard. So obviously, I oppose those. In terms of affordable housing, I do support affordable housing. It does seem like there's not a lot of distribution around the area. It seems like it's being crammed in one place, so I'd like to see some, some more kind of spreading around of that aspect. That's about all I've got to say, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just on that comment, for those who are here, just, I hope this is okay. We are looking forward to doing an affordable component citywide. It's just, it was part of our intention to, as rezones were happening, to make sure it had an affordable component as we were doing it, to make sure we got it in the process. I think I had that correct, right? Are there any, okay, yes.
Hi, my name is Teresa Tooki. I, I live at 17426 Bothell Way, Northeast. I live in the riverfront condominiums that you keep seeing on that map. It's the one that's on the east side. It's a, it's very, it's very singular. It, it would not probably be approved to be built today. And I just wanted to make a comment that I used to work for the City of Bothell, and I voted for every, every development issue that came up over the years because I always felt that Bothell needed to grow, and I voted for all these high-rises that we have now, and I voted for all the levies that we have that have been able to, to, to increase the funds for us to do the road improvement and all the transportation issues and stuff. But what I'm wondering is, when is our sacrifice and when is it enough enough? I mean, we've, downtown people have already sacrificed so much by the traffic problems that we have and the parking problems that we have. I would implore you that if you're going to decide to develop the east side of 522, that we increase the setbacks because we're going to have to widen those lanes, and we're going to have to put medians in the middle of those lanes. And people that live in Riverfront Landing, where I live, are retired, older people. They can't get out now as it is right now, and they can't turn right easily and turn left easily, and so we know medians are coming just because of the traffic that we have now. So if you're going to put some density on the east side of 522, we're going to run into some horrible traffic problems. That's the one issue I want to bring up. So I'm going to ask you, if you're going to do any of this kind of stuff, think about the setback, and think about how wide those lanes are, and think about what we're going to need for medians in there. And the second issue I'm really concerned about is parking. All this high-density condos, apartments, and everything that get built in Bothell does not have enough parking. The codes that Bothell have for parking are not adequate enough. I know we want to become one of those walking cities, and I love it. You know, I live right on the river, and I, I walk to, try to walk to work, and I try to do all that, but it's, the way we want it to be is not necessarily the way it is. And so I would implore you that if you're going to build these apartments and condos and stuff on the 522, at least change the code so that they provide parking so that these people don't have the problems that they have in the downtown area with all the other places that are doing that. And the last thing I wanted to say is, Dave was bringing up about this, this, I don't know if it's a townhouse complex that's going to be built right behind where we live. Can you, can you see on the, on the, we live in the Riverfront Landing condominiums, there's going to be a, a four-story townhouse condominium, apartments or something being built right behind us. And now the sun's blocked, we don't get the sun from that because, you know, that's, I got that steep hill and stuff, and so everybody's going to run into these issues. And so I just ask that you kind of keep in mind the fact that City of Bothell people that live here, I feel we've made enough sacrifice. Why don't you start working on density like Canyon Park or some other places other than downtown? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.[1023.63][1023.63](applause) Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak? Okay, I don't see any other hands. Thank you so much for all the public comments. That definitely gives us a lot of information. Oh, yes.
Yes, when will the next meeting be? The next meeting that we're going to have.
Oh, yes. Are we able to, it, it looks like it's going to be November 14th. Is that right, Dave?
That's what we were recommending.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dave, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So this is for Dave. Both in the West Maywood and the South Maywood frontages, the note in your report shows that there's a special setback in height limit provisions that would remain in effect. I heard two members of the, the audience here that, that contested that. Can you speak to their comments? As far as one was about a five-foot setback, whereas what I'm reading here is it was going to be 15 feet?
Yeah, the earlier packets did refer to that. The special setback do only apply to the adjacent single-family zoning, so the standard setbacks would apply in, in those two areas. So those would be 10 feet for a rear setback, five feet for a side setback without living space windows, or 10 feet for a side setback with living space windows.
Okay, thanks. In which area we were speaking to right there?
The South and West Maywood frontages.
Okay.
Because those are all adjacent to, already adjacent to multifamily zones.
Okay. So, yeah, with that, we can go ahead and, I guess, close public comment for tonight and move on to the discussion, is it?
Yes, just to be clear, we're not closing the public hearing at this point.
Correct.
Moving on from the public comment this evening.
So with that, I guess we can go ahead and take comments from, I guess, from the Planning Commission on questions that you have with regards to anything that has been said by staff, or questions for Arch, or anything you have in the packets. I guess we can, we could kind of move through, Dave, yes?
Well, I was just going to say, if you would like, I'm also prepared to bring up the, these latest revisions and go through those, walk you through those.
Okay, that'd be great. Let's do that.
I think I can do this fairly quickly. So this, this is the hard copy that's, that you've received on the dais today. So the, the changes are highlighted, the, and are shown in, and the revisions are, are still shown in, strike through an underlying text. Let me try. That didn't work. There we go. Okay. So the first applies to the downtown transition district requirements and reflects the change from 8% to 10% of the percentage of the number of new dwelling units will, to be affordable at the moderate income level. The, actually, this is not showing. The Section D there indicates that the alternative compliance, the fee-in lieu or building the, the units off-site, would only apply to fewer than 10 dwelling units. That was not intended. So the provisions that are in BMC 12.07, .050 would, would apply, and basically, we would strike this Section D. The other thing for the general downtown corridor district, there has been previous requests for adopting the, in that district, the parking requirements for the general downtown corridor that council has adopted for general downtown corridor. And if we're going to be requiring affordable housing, that it would make sense, and it would, it would be consistent with that to, to use those parking requirements rather than the, what currently, currently applies in the SR522 corridor, which is the citywide requirement of 2.2 spaces per unit. So this would require one space for studio and one-bedroom units, two spaces for two-bedroom units, and 2.2 spaces for three bedrooms and above. The, some minor changes to the SR522 corridor requirements.
Dave?
Yes?
Sorry to interrupt, but our revision, too, that we have, like Section D, for example, that's all highlighted and scratched.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the correct.
Okay.
That's what we should be seeing here on the screen, so I apologize for that. That's the only difference, is that we are proposing to eliminate, eliminate the Section D for both of those areas. Let me just, I think that, that's it as far as those highlighted changes that we've, that are, have been introduced here. Those are the substantive changes there. I would also like to say that at the last planning, at the last study session, there was, there did seem to be a consensus of the commission that was not inclined to move forward with the, removing the density limits, particularly in the South Maywood area. I think there were also some that were not in favor of it in the West Maywood area. I wanted to bring those both forward. There was no official decision made at that point, and wanted to bring it forward with, again, with this additional analysis and, before we took it off the table entirely.
Okay.
So we, we're not ignoring your direction there.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks, Dave. Oh, can you, can you please take your comment to the mic, please? Thank you.
Hi, I'm James Caniff again. I live at 10201 Northeast 186th Street. Thanks again for taking my comment. The one-vehicle space per bedroom or 2.2 spaces unit, whichever is less, is that, what is it existing right now, or is that a new formula that you've come up with, Dave?
That is a, that's what exists in the general downtown corridor, which.
So it exists right now with the Edge Apartments?
No.
What's the, what's the Edge Apartments code? Do you know?
They were built, they, that was permitted prior to the city council adopting interim parking requirement in that area and in the downtown transition district. The, the current requirement is one space for studios and one bedroom, one and a half spaces for a two-bedroom, and 2.2 spaces for three bedrooms and more.
So do you understand the Plan Commission, why more people are parking on our streets? Because there's a lack of parking? And then I want to comment that to get parking at that unit edge, you have to pay an extra $150 per month. Did you guys know that? Dave, David?
A fleet, yeah. I was not aware of that actual, actual number, but, but I'm not surprised by that.
Okay.
Okay. But, yeah, I do know that parking's beginning to spill over, so.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for taking my comment. And I just wanted you guys to realize that we're kind of getting squeezed here, and I think having hard numbers that you guys can see in the Planning Commission with parking, it would be helpful for you guys to make.
Okay.
Good choices. And so I think all zoning should have, like, you know, you should maybe have a parking map to see, you know, what's required.
Okay. And we may, we'll, we'll withhold public, any more public comment for now, but we'll give you some time later to maybe comment and.
All right. That's what I wanted to say.
Yeah, we won't be closing the hearing or anything. There'll be, there'll be future opportunity. Thank you.
Just a quick recap. I mean, I think a lot of the points you guys brought up tonight was what we talked about during our study session last time. We have a lot of the same concerns that you guys have expressed with these individual neighborhoods. So it's not new to us, and we're, we're sensitive to what you guys are talking about tonight, and you're not talking on deaf ears. We're just going through the process because this is our packet, and we're going to discuss it tonight. We're not going to make any decisions tonight because we're going to have the 14th open as well. So if there's new or different information you guys want to bring back on November 14th, that's another opportunity to do it, but we, we appreciate you guys being here tonight.
And I realize, let's just go ahead and take a five-minute break, so we'll resume at like 7:38, because we don't have a quorum up here right now, so. Okay, and welcome back. So, let's see. So, at this point in time, I guess we can go ahead and make our way through the potential changes that staff has brought to us. And Dave and I, we had just a quick chance to talk. So, basically, you're looking for basically any questions or additional information that you want on these topics that we've shared and maybe to kind of give you some direction on where we're going with those.
Yes. Given that we are continuing the public hearing and the deliberations, you're certainly welcome to do as much deliberating as you would like in discussing these options. But since we will be coming back to you, I think the most important thing is additional information that you think -- additional analysis that you would like us to bring back to you to make a decision on November 14th.
I think with that, let's just -- I was thinking, maybe we can just move through the packet that you gave, the memorandum. And so, is -- so, let's just go ahead and first talk about the SR 522 corridor, the change from general commercial to SR 522. And just to see if any of the commissioners have any additional -- anyway, you know what to do. Any questions, comments, additional information that we need for the November 14th meeting? Commissioner Cape?
I think it was Lynn Anderson that brought up the capacity analysis for this area and also Ms. Tukey. Sorry if I butchered name. Just with traffic in that region, it'd be nice if we could plan on the worst and just get a capped number of anticipated development by either -- I know it's hard between offices and residential, but maybe we look at it either way and try to get a feel for what that's going to be along that corridor. The one aspect, though, I'm always nervous about traffic because we're slammed as we are. The one aspect that I liked in previous meetings when we were talking in a bubble without actual, like, neighborhood feedback was transit-oriented development and being close to bus routes and being close to a major thoroughfare through Bothell. But if we're overtaxing the system already and we're just adding to it, it'd be nice to look at those numbers next time.
So, just a little bit more information. Thank you for that direction and wanted to give some more information following up on some of the comments and questions that came from the public on this. So, State Route 522 is a state highway. That's not a city street, but we are working with the state and also a sound transit because that is planned for Bus Rapid Transit line. So, there are some improvements. There will be some widening of that. I don't have the specifics on that, but we can bring that to you if you're interested in that information. As Dave's report pointed out, this area was part -- this zoning was originally part of the downtown plan. So, it was analyzed as part of the EIS. I don't know what the level of development was that was considered, that was looked at in that EIS, but we can bring that information back to you as well in terms of the traffic for this area. So, it's not anything beyond what has already been analyzed in terms of the planning for the area, in terms of that increase, that zoning increase. What would happen, and I think this is important for the commission to understand as well, that assumed a certain level of development, both residential development and commercial development. And once we hit those thresholds, then any development that goes beyond that would have to do its own environmental analysis, including traffic. So, even though it probably didn't assume that that's all residential along there, I don't know for sure, but I'm guessing that it probably didn't assume all residential. Whatever that mix would be, we have those thresholds, a certain number of units that would be developed, residential, a certain amount of square footage of commercial that would be developed. Once you exceed that, then either we have to go back and redo that environmental analysis for that entire area or individual projects would have to do their own. So, I just want to make sure that the commission understands that as well. So, there has been that analysis done on the future traffic based on the assumptions at that time, and we can provide that information to you. That's all available in the EIS that was done.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, and on that -- well, I'm just thinking about it. Commissioner Kiranen, who's not here tonight, but hopefully will be here on the 14th, one of his concerns also was that he initially brought up, and one of the study sessions was the traffic in that area and how hard it is to get if you're -- say you're Yakima or you're what was Preservation Kitchen or anywhere on Long, and you want to try to go east out of there. How do you do that with all the traffic? So, yeah, that additional traffic capacity would be great.
I can give just quick -- some quick information relative to that. Our work with the plans for the Bus Rapid Transit means that we, as development proposals come in for that corridor, we're providing room for a bus and business access and transit lane, a Bat Lane in both directions, even though initially from Wayne Curve through Bothell, it'll only be in the eastbound direction. So, we're not allowing development that will be in the way of a future widening of that road. And there's one other related aspect of that that I was gonna -- oh, the planning for future improvements along that corridor. It's still in a fairly early stage, but it is recognized that there are going to be impediments in terms of left-turn movements from driveways. So, it's being done -- we're looking into U-turn opportunities that will allow people to make those maneuvers.
Okay. Thanks, Dave. Commissioner Cape?
Yeah, that was one thing I was going to follow up on. I think the medians are probably in our future along that stretch of road. So, it would be nice if we could look at the U-turn opportunities of people heading west out of the condos to the south side of 522 would turn around at Brooks Biddle or how far up Bothell Way they have to go in order to get back and head towards Seattle or towards Kenmore. And same is true for the opposite direction.
Great. So, there's some guidance or maybe some kind of something visually, too?
Yeah. My understanding that there would potentially be U-turns at 180th and 96th, but I'll verify that with our Public Works folks. And like I said, I'm not sure we absolutely know for sure where those are going to be, but I think that's the current thinking.
Okay. Thanks, Dave. So, any other comments with regards to the corridor, with regards to any--
One quick question. I think I understand this, but the comment about the EIS study, is that for all three of these sections or just for the corridor that's right along 522 by the Fruit Market?
All three.
Okay, thanks.
And what -- does anybody else have any comment with regards to -- we were talking about a potential, if it was going to be a commercial-only building, that there would be some type of affordable housing component, even if it was just commercial? Were we talking about that earlier? I was trying to figure out what the commission kind of was on that front.
Yeah, that's one issue that we'd like direction, whether you want us to come back with a proposal for that.
I would. I mean, I think we have two needs. I don't know that affordable housing is the only thing that the city needs to focus on, but it's a huge gap right now throughout Bothell, so it should be an emphasis. But looking at open space alternatively as part of that equation might be something that we need to talk about in the future.
I'm seeing nodding heads. That'd be great, Dave.
If I could just make a comment along those lines for you. Right now, we do have that tool, but when we did work with Issaquah, they did set it up that those fees could go for either, and it's more a city call than it is a developer call. So, you do have one tool in place now. If in the future you expand and there's other benefits and you use a fee approach, you could always revise that in the future and you could maybe put -- we'll look at that and let you understand that. But we're trying to work within your existing system now, but as long as you don't change the monetary amount, how you use that money in the future could potentially be revised.
Great. Aaron?
One thing I'd be curious about is the actual fee. And not tonight or during the November 14th session, but how much money are we actually talking about, right? Because if it's a $10,000 offset, we can't build much affordable housing with a $10,000 offset from a single commercial project. So, some sort of scaling information for us to understand that.
Sure. And if I could comment to that, that's part of the whole philosophy behind Arch is that if, again, if you're just trying to use that money standalone, that's a good point. And it's still useful to understand. So, we'll try to look into that. But part of the philosophy of Arch is we have cities who do give us that much money because they're very, very, very small. And it gets combined with other resources so that we can do larger projects or do them wherever the most benefit is. But I think it's a great question. I just wanted you to be aware that part of the idea behind Arch was so that small pieces could still potentially contribute to greater goods.
Thank you.
I'm trying to see if I have any other questions or comments with regard to the corridor. Okay, so I guess with that, we'll kind of -- we can always come back to it if somebody thinks of a comment later on. And then I guess we can move into the Downtown Transition District, removing the remaining density limits. And I think we -- I think there's three different areas. There may be a more guidance on certain areas than others. Does anybody want to kind of take a stab? Let's just start with the -- let's start with the West Hill. This is a potential removing of remaining density limits in the Downtown Transition District. Let's talk about, like, lower, I guess it's West Hill.
So, in general, I'm pretty supportive of the plan for West Hill, but someone raised a question tonight about Hall Road, and I'd like to find out more from Public Works if what the plan is for Hall Road. I've walked down that road a few times. It is pretty precarious. So, that's just an additional piece of information I would like.
On that comment, I feel the same. I heard about it. I know when there was a group that was concerned about the Toll Brothers project and the impact on that street. And so, it would be interesting to find some information on what that's done to traffic on the street and what potentially, you know, are people going to be using that road and potential for, you know, either widening or sidewalks or the like. Patrick?
During our study session, Dave, this is the subarea where the representative for apartment building came. Is that correct? Talking about the nonconforming legal, nonconforming aspect of the current apartments. Do you want to -- I know you touched on it during the presentation, but do you want to expand on that or should that guide us in our thinking at all, you know, for this whole area? Or just want to get some more information?
So, that was comments by Klev Schonning, which you've got on now as Exhibit Number Four. So, he's elaborated on that in those written comments. That's one of the reasons for -- well, it wasn't one of the reasons that we brought it forward, but it certainly is a reason in favor of making this change to reduce the number of legal, nonconforming uses in that area.
And to confirm again, Dave, what is the setback? It backs up to some single-family neighborhoods here. So, what would the setback say be into that 8400 zone?
Yeah, the special setback is 25 feet. And in the Downtown Transition District, the height limit is already 30 -- is limited at 35 feet, so there's no special height limit or--
So, no taller than 35 feet?
Yeah.
25-foot setback?
Yeah.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. Let me see if I have any other questions with regards to that. I do not think I do. Okay, so, could you go to the -- one of the next slides there where we're talking about, I guess it's Lower Maywood and West Maywood? Okay, here's West Maywood. Okay. I know we had a couple of comments tonight about this area and the history of it. I don't know if anybody has any questions or guidance for staff.
No, just a comment. I was wondering if there's ever going to be a continued master plan up Bothell Everett Highway. It seems like we've got the new boulevard developed and you kind of quickly transition into residential on one side and the continue of commercial on with QFC parking lot on the other side of the street. Is-- Is this area as a whole ever going to be kinda master planned as you get up to Canyon Park? Or do you not see that happening?
Well, I would say that it has, with the downtown plan zoning, that we've established zoning that will allow redevelopment, this downtown transition style of redevelopment in that area. Beyond that, it's up to the private property owners to move forward on redeveloping those properties if they're so inclined. As far as the roadway itself, we are in the process of applying for funding to improve from the multiway boulevard up to the Safeway with four lanes and left turn lanes where needed. So the, in terms of the traffic capacity and the ability to bring transit, more transit down that corridor, the work is underway on that, on that front. It'll take several years before we, before that actually happens, but it's part of the plan.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious because I think it's sort of a mixed, mixed area where you have some neat historic homes along that stretch, but a lot of them are being used as businesses now anyway, followed by the Kaufman Building at the end of the street. It's just, I don't know, it's kind of a mixed bag as is. But yeah, just curious what the future held.
So the downtown plan has both minimum and maximum setbacks. So as it redevelops per the current zoning, there'll be a more consistent street frontage and more consistent. That was one of the principles of the downtown plan, that property values increase generally when adjacent development is similar and harmonious with that development. So over time, that, that's the idea, that that would, that would become less of a mishmash and more, more of a continuous street front along that area.
Sure. Thanks.
So Dave, one of the things you just said piqued my interest in that was that you're applying for funds for the widening of that from the multiway boulevard up to Safeway. Is that a recent development? Or is that kind of more of the same long-term plan that we've had?
No, we have some, it's been a long-term plan for some time, but now we're actually getting design, initial design money. And, but as you know, it's a multi-year process. You get grants for the design, then you get grants for the next phase of design and property acquisition. And it takes several years before you actually get to the construction.
But you think we're just a few years or several years away from construction? Or, I mean, you're feeling optimistic about it?
Yeah. Again, I can come back with, talk with Public Works and get their projection about when that might actually happen.
I would love to hear more about that because I think that's one of the most important transportation projects that we can do in the city to connect the two counties and continue that throughput there, particularly with the Swift BRT coming to Canyon Park and not visiting downtown Bothell because of the capacity issues.
Yeah, and that's one of the drivers behind this, that when that, when we do have the capacity, then Swift Community Transit does wanna bring Swift down Bothell Way to downtown and to the campus.
All right, that's good. That makes me happy. Thanks.
Arthur, Mike, maybe there's a question for you guys. As you know, because we have many meetings, and just before I throw it out there, like, so for everybody who hears about affordable housing, you read about in the paper here, on the radio, see on... So Arthur, this will probably be one of the last meetings he'll share with us, and he's one of the experts in the whole Seattle area on this. So it's an honor to have you here. And Mike is, I know, learning along the way from you. So anyway, I wanted to throw that out there. So if you have affordable questions, you might hit Arthur up before he leaves tonight. In previous meetings, it's no secret that I like old historic homes. And have you seen any affordable projects that incorporate in historic residences with new development? I guess, and to lead you into that, I'm all for widening the Bothell Multiway Boulevard there. With this, we have this kind of triangular block of Bothell, which is a large component of historic homes, some of the last, probably almost contiguous with regards to the Kaufman Building. Even if you widen it, you could potentially keep the residences and develop on the backside of it in some type of capacity where you have... I know that's kind of a mixing of zone. I mean, I know like, I know planning doesn't generally tend to like that, but I know we did have a person come to us several meetings ago with a concept that I'd never heard of but called the missing middle. And it was a way to save historic structures by turning them into duplexes or restaurants and building around them with similar types of facades so that they could be incorporated in. Do you see any way where, so if we make this change, I assume the, I assume the valuations of these pieces of property will go up and the taxation on these properties will go up. Is there any way that you can see to, without a whole lot of difficulty being able to do what we're trying to do, but possibly preserve some of the housing there? Which currently are, several of them are currently businesses.
I would say at the scale you're looking at here, because I think this is as much a, this zoning would result as much in people's interest in redevelopment, especially given the parcel size that have to drive through the neighborhood more. The only example that feels relatively close to what you're describing are some communities where, and I wouldn't say they meet the profile of your community per se, but where they have allowed older homes to be split up and add carriage, you know, if you have an alleyway, add carriage units so that you are taking old single-family homes, this is an area of Victoria, Vancouver, and have turned them into three and fourplex units, designed to be ownership units. And in fact, they were allowed to do that in exchange for maintaining the character. So that's the Kitzlano area of Vancouver, some of you may have heard of it. And it was done, but there is a very, very different housing profile because the homes were much larger. So the idea of...
Yeah, these are much smaller.
Yeah, and so where these are much smaller. So I can't think of anything off the top of my head, especially in the communities I'm more experienced in working, where this kind of smaller homes on relatively small lots has been preserved through redevelopment, you know, the older homes. Now, I've seen design character be incorporated. So if there's certain areas, like in Kirkland, where one side of the street is single-family, other side is multifamily near their downtown, they've encouraged the new developments to have design so that they blend in better with that neighborhood where you have a juxtaposition on a street. But that isn't linked to affordability per se. I'd say in Kitzlano, that does end up linking to some, probably your missing middle that you're describing here. And I would also point out that if this is an area that goes ownership, we are talking about the affordability levels are 80% median, which is not, I don't know if I would call it quite missing middle, but that is housing in the 200,000 plus 200,000 to 300,000 probably price range at 80% median, depending on how it's configured itself.
80% median for ownership?
Yeah. Right, so it's not low, low income. It is a more moderate income for ownership housing that would be created. But I would say, I'd have to look at the neighborhood more, but it's not definitely a profile that would be a very common. It would be a pretty unique approach you'd be trying to take.
Okay. And Dave, so what is the setbacks in this area? What are the setback elements for this one?
So the...
It's the same.
Rear setbacks are 10 feet, side setbacks are five feet without living space windows, 10 feet with living space windows.
35-feet height limit?
Yeah.
Okay.
I should point out that the adjacent area that was zoned R4000 has 15-foot rear setbacks, but five-foot side setbacks with no limitations on living space windows.
Okay. Aaron.
The only thing, a resident mentioned a bonus for affordable housings in the West Maywood and all of the downtown transition zones. Is that something we can look at before November 14?
We can certainly take a look at that. And I'm gonna ask Arthur or Mike to weigh in on this as well. Just to talk a little bit more about the difference between that approach and what we're proposing. The mandatory approach means that regardless of how much housing they develop, so let's say they could put 20 units on the site, they only decide to build 12, they would still have to do affordable housing. If we do it as a bonus or an incentive system, then they may choose to build something less than what would trigger that bonus, in which case we would get no affordable housing out of that. So that's, that's one of the important differences there. But either system can be used, either system can work. The Bell Red system that Arthur referred to earlier is a, is an incentive-based system.
I think I asked the question the wrong way. So I'm gonna change my question completely. Does the affordable housing component that we've been talking about apply to the downtown transition area?
Yes.
Thank you. I think, I think I was just...
As a mandatory provision, not as a bonus.
Thank you. I think I was not connecting the dots. We're there. Thank you.
Okay, and the last, last area we can talk about, if you can go to the next slide then, I guess it's South Maywood. I know we had a lot of speakers with regards to this. The commissioners have any comments or guidance or additional questions for staff here?
So from the study session, this one always seemed a little bit like an outlier. It's more in the heart of an existing neighborhood versus connected to a major thoroughfare. So I think when we looked at it last time, we were all a little bit cautious about proceeding with changing this neighborhood. But a few commissioners who were at that meeting aren't here tonight. Commissioner Hampton, I don't think you were at the first time we, at the study session. So I'd like to get your thoughts on it since you've seen it for the first time. But overall, yeah, I think we were, I don't wanna speak for everybody, but not anxious to move forward with this one.
Did you have any comment on it, on that particular area?
You know, I think we've received a lot of really great feedback on this. And of the three, I think this is the one that would raise the most concerns with me. Given the topography and how the hill starts to climb beyond this, I would consider it, but I'd wanna do a little bit more reading and weigh in further on this.
Okay.
I don't think I'm ready to make a decision today.
Okay.
I think I'm on the cautious side. I really felt like this was not the time to address this neighborhood personally. I've stated it before and I'll state it again. I love the character of the neighborhood. I don't live anywhere near it. But I think this is one neighborhood that it just doesn't make sense to me to address it. I also wanted to state for the record that I, I know the whole point this was brought up was for conformity, and I am kind of a conformist, and I was looking forward to having a nice uniformed law. But I just, yeah, I feel pretty strongly that we should not include South Maywood in our discussions.
I would agree with pretty much everything you said. I wanna thank you for bringing it up at the last, I think it was, study session to talk about this. And we definitely heard from a lot of the people who are directly impacted by this tonight, and some of them are still in the audience. So I don't need any further, I don't have any other further questions about this.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Just so I'm clear, this is bordered by 185th and 186th, right?
It's, it actually doesn't reach all the way down to 185th. It goes from the alley between 185th and 186th up to 186th.
There's a gravel alley behind our houses that runs a sewer line that the city owns. And so the city can do whatever it wants with that because it owns that property.
Okay.
So Dave, the, this portion is on one, I'm just looking at my map here. 186th. Then there's an alley there.
Is there any...
So you're north of the new building.
Yeah, maybe you have your...
And that's, is that, is that the kind of the preferred route for the new bus line coming through downtown?
No.
No?
Well, it's one block south of...
Okay, okay, that's what I thought. Okay. I see.
So, and the image on the bottom is a view from the, from the north looking south. So it's kind of opposite view from, yeah, opposite orientation of the aerial map.
Okay. All right, I think I get it. Thanks.
There was one suggestion brought up by Commissioner Kirin in during our study session, which was the idea of moving the line so that this area wouldn't be in the downtown transition, sorry, downtown area. I'm sort of, if that's something that we can, if it's worth discussing that.
Is that a, is that a, that would be a new hearing? Would it, if we wanted to change the particular zoning on a, in an area?
That would be a comprehensive plan amendment.
Update, okay.
And it's, it's one that, if planning commissioners, commission wishes that we look at that, we could. The previous zoning was our 2800 OP, which allows, it's fairly similar to the DT. Our 2800 would have a density of about 15 units per acre as opposed to 20 with the density limit.
So if we did wanna look at that, is that a recommendation we just pass on to council for next year to look at? Is that how that works? Okay. Okay. So, well, I guess we don't need to talk about that tonight, but that's good to know. But was that, could you say that again?
Sorry, can we, can we bring it up in the next meeting to discuss moving it to council?
You could make that part of your recommendation to council as part of your overall package in the context of this particular area.
Right.
Whatever your recommendation is for this area, you could include that with it to ask the council to consider that in the docket for future comprehensive plan amendments.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
I would, I would recommend that you not discuss what that should be, however, because that is not something that is right now in your purview or in our scope of what we're looking at here.
Okay. Noted. Okay, so I don't have any other, I don't have any other questions. Looks like commissioners aren't doing any other questions on that potential. So can we keep moving along in the slides there? I don't, maybe, I don't know if that's the best way to do it, but I know we need to...
If you have any additional analysis related to the affordability, that's what this next section is. We've already heard that you would like us to look at a proposal for an affordability requirement related to commercial development in the SR522 corridor.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you have any other questions? Appreciate it.
I don't really have any questions, just, I guess, general comments. Real quick, as far as the monthly rent, that obviously gets updated, the monthly rate for market rents, that gets updated annually, semi-annually, how do we set those targets for the developers and their leasing guidelines?
You mean the affordable rents?
Yeah.
So the affordable rents are adjusted annually based on changes to the median income in the region, and that comes from a federal government dot com?
Okay. I thought your point earlier was kind of poignant. It was telling about we can't increase the level to which we're gonna go for affordable housing. So if we start with 60%, we decide to back it off to 70, that's doable and that's okay. If we go 60 to 50, we can't go in that direction.
Or you'd have to decrease the amount of affordability required. I mean, as long as the net impact stays...
The same. I mean, I'm looking at it, and I think, you know, $1,300 is still a lot for a lot of families in this area. And I don't know that 70% gets us to where we need to be for this region. But next, I guess next meeting, you're gonna be looking for the percentage, so 8 or 10%, and what percent of affordable 60 or 70 or anywhere in that range? Is there anything else you need from us before next meeting? Or at next meeting?
Not unless you have questions about any of the figures that we walked through at the last meeting. And I mean, we haven't changed any of the numbers per se. We've just looked at them a little more closely.
No, I think, I mean, Mike did a great job last time going through all the numbers too. So I think we got a good baseline anyway. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. And then, so with regards to the next two topics, the clarifying the design review and also, sorry, there's just a lot in here today to keep straight, and there's a lot of great comments. And then the open space requirements. I know there was some references to deferring it, or is that just deferring different aspects of it until we got more information? Or have we already gotten that information now? Because you needed to use further research, staff for staff.
What we're proposing are just a couple of fairly small amendments now to move the requirement for Landmark Preservation Board up before permits middle. And, and as far as public open space to clarify the relationship between potential fee and lieu and parks and open space impact fees. Then we would come back later with, with further analysis and potential further amendments.
Okay, so later than the 14th?
Yes.
So we don't need to really, unless we have some questions that are just kind of jumping out at us, we'll just kind of wait until we, we'll just attack those topics again in the future.
Yeah, we're, we're just not prepared to come back with any.
Okay.
Further amendments in this timeframe.
Okay, thank you. If nobody else has any other comments, I guess I could, a motion to continue the hearing? And it was to November 14th, correct?
Yes.
Would you like to make a motion? Okay.
Like to make a motion to continue this on, continue this.
Public hearing.
Public hearing on November 14th, 2018.
Second.
Do we need to tell us, tell what the public hearing is, or?
It's a continuation of everything that's on this agenda.
Right, I just want to make sure we're, we're good. I'll second that then.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the meeting is continued to November 14th. Once again, thank you so much for everybody who came tonight to speak. There is no, no study session, no business reports from staff.
I have none.
I would just like to reiterate a couple of things that were said this evening. I think it's important to highlight for the public in particular. One is that because you've continued the public hearing, the comment period remains open. So if they have written comments, they would like to submit either letters or emails. Certainly encourage people to do that even between now and the 14th. And they're certainly welcome to come back and testify in person again on the 14th as well. So I just want to make sure people understand that is, that's an option that's open to them. I think, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned earlier about the affordable housing. There were several comments about, it seems like there's a lot of focus on affordable housing in the downtown. And I think you made a good comment that I would like to reiterate. I think it's important for, for the public to understand. Right now, there is more of a focus on that because that's where we're looking at some rezones. We can only do the mandatory when we provide some additional capacity increase to a developer. So that's why right now that is the focus. But we have, we have a housing strategy that does look citywide at affordable housing. And we are looking at not just up zones, but other ways that we can increase affordable housing throughout the city. So I appreciate the, the comments that, that folks made, and I understand why it appears that way. But that's, that's why it appears that way right now, because that is where there, a fair amount of that development is happening in terms of the, the rezoning that we're looking at. So we want to take advantage of those opportunities when we are looking at rezones to, to capture that affordable housing opportunity. And that's something that the commission worked on last year, the council adopted this year, that laid the foundation for, for you to be able to do that. So we'll continue to, to work on that as well as in other parts of the city. And Canyon Park is one of those, working on updating the Canyon Park plan, and we'll be looking at affordable housing out there as well.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you for that opportunity.
Bet. Any reports, any members' reports?
Just wanted to reiterate your comments about Arthur from March. Just thank you for the last couple of years coming in and spending way too much of your time in here at night on a Wednesday. Your, your input has been amazing, so we really appreciate it. Best of luck in retirement.
And we look forward to seeing Mike with us, yeah, into the future. One comment I'll throw out is we are down a commissioner now because we lost one of our commissioners, which was stated at the last meeting. So anybody who's listening on TV or here, keep your eyes on the website because we will be, you know, looking to fill that position sometime soon, hopefully, so. Motion to adjourn? Oh, oh, oh. Michael? Sorry.
Go ahead.
No, please.
I was just going to say I have a little bit of information on that as well. We've had some conversations with the city clerk. So we have, we also have vacancies on some other boards and commissions. We have two now on the Landmark Preservation Board, for example. So the, the city will be going through a process of putting information out, asking for folks to apply. And that will probably happen sometime in November with the council then making appointments, interviews in January and appointments in early February. So we, we are working on filling that, but it's going to take a couple of months to be able to do that. But I would echo your comment about encouraging people, if they're interested at all in any of the city's boards or commissions, to, to apply when that, when that's put up on the website.
Okay, thanks.
Look forward in November.
So I'm going to sound like a broken record here, but I want to thank Arthur again. You know, I don't know if a lot of people that, that tune into these meetings realize how integral his role is with our planning staff. And, you know, he's, he's basically filling a partial employee position here along with Mike and others that, that support them. And you've been doing this for a very long time, and you know, you know, far more than any of us up here, and you've been incredibly patient with us and those before us and those who sit up here on Tuesday nights as well. And it doesn't go unnoticed, and you'll, you'll certainly be missed, but we wish you well. So thanks so much.
Well, I just need to, we do, I do a thing with my daughter called ping pong. She sends me a picture of a ski area and then I send her a picture back. I got a pong back to you guys. It's really been a pleasure working with you the last three years. I've found your observations and comments and your work to be stellar, and I've totally enjoyed working with this commission the last three years. But I appreciate your kind words, but you've made it really easy and enjoyable.
Thanks, Arthur. All right, do you have a motion? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.